I'll call the meeting of the East Providence City Council on December 2, 2025, to order. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll of the council?
Councilman Fogarty.
Yeah.
Councilman Lawson.
Yeah.
Council Vice President Rego.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Souza.
Here.
Council President Roderick.
Here. The record show all five members of the council are present. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge. Thank you. Without objection, before we begin the formal order of the agenda, I'm going to ask that we call up the first item on page four of our docket, item number three. And Madam Clerk, if you could just read the ordinance in question, the summary.
In ordinance and amendment of chapter eighteen of the revised ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, nineteen ninety-eight, as amended, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section One, Section Eighteen dash four-two-one, entitled Definitions of Article Fourteen, entitled Bicycles of Chapter Eighteen is replaced and amended to include electric bicycles. Section Eighteen dash four-two-four is amended to prohibit the riding of electrical bicycles on sidewalks or public footworks and creating a new section eighteen, four-twenty-seven, eighteen, four-twenty-eight, and eighteen, four-twenty-nine, related to the regulations and enforcement of electric bicycles in city parks and recreational areas introduced by Council Vice President Rego and Councilman Fogarty.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is basically the e-bike ordinance. And after consultation with the mayor and the police chief who agree with me, I'm going to ask the council to hold off on this, take a step back, a breath back, and table the issue, not to do away with this, but to tweak the language. I think that we all are in agreement. We want to hone in on safety and preventing vandalism. And I think some misnomers have been spread. So we have time here. Let's take a breath, step back, table it for one of the next two meetings or so, and get this worked on quickly. So Councilman Fogarty, do you have a motion?
I would like a motion to table it.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Souza, also Councilman Lawson. Madam Clerk, could you just call the roll?
Councilman Fogarty.
Aye.
Councilman Lawson.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rego.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Roderick.
Aye. Thank you. So we'll table it. Hopefully, within the next couple of meetings, we'll have this language tweaked, and we'll move ahead. There's no rush.
I think what the mayor wanted was more about the van. When the mayor came to us, it was about vandalism.
Right, exactly. That's what we'll fine-tune it. Thank you. All set on that, Madam Clerk? Okay, we can resume the rest of the agenda now from the beginning. Thank you, council members.
Thank you to the people that reached out. I really appreciate that. So just to finish, Council President, I thank you. We lost a pet over the Rainbow Bridge, so anybody that's been there, it's no fun. I apologize for missing the last meeting. Lot of calls, lot of emails about this. So with respect to the council and to the constituents, that's why we made this decision. And I like to tweak it myself with a few words involved in it because there's some mistakes in it. But thank you, and I appreciate you being here. For those people that came out to speak, I thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. So that's the word of the day, tweak. Next. Yep.
Proclamations and presentations, a presentation from Dan Borges or Tracy Johnson on the Crescent Park Carousel Concession Event Tent Venue Project.
So we don't really need the presentation if we just want to vote on.
Right. Councilman Lawson, do you have a motion? Let's go right to that.
This is the project that's been years in the works. We're all fully aware of it. It's to put a pad for the event tent and the storage building with new bathrooms at Crescent Park. At this point, we won't be doing the concession building part, and the two existing buildings will not be taken down. So we're still going to have our clam cakes and chowders. So if you want to call the resolution.
Sure. I just would ask the city clerk to, just for the benefit of the public that are here, just to read the heading of that on the agenda, where it is scheduled for.
Number five, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with New England Construction related to the Crescent Park Carousel Concession Storage Structure Project introduced by Council President Roderick.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Lawson. Thank you for your work on this also, Councilman, and seconded by Council Vice President Rego, Councilwoman Souza. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Five-zero. Thank you. Now we can.
And just so the public knows, this is on the carousel side, not the water side.
Yes.
And if anybody's got questions, concern, they can reach out to me at waterfallcouncil@eastprovidenceiria.gov. I'll be more than happy to explain that.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, now that we've confused you with the agenda once again, you may revert back to the regular order.
Consent calendar for discussion and possible vote. Council journals, November fourth, twenty twenty-five. Regular meeting minutes, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Regular meeting minutes. Annual regular meeting calendar for twenty twenty-six and notice of new property number sixty-six Fraser Street, East Providence, Rhode Island, zero-two-nine-one-four, mat-two-zero-seven, block thirteen, parcel zero-zero-two-point-one-zero. I mean, point, yeah, one-zero, sorry.
Through, excuse me, through the chair?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I just wanted to address on section B with our annual twenty twenty-six regular calendar meetings. Tuesday, November third is an election day.
Right.
So I don't believe we'll be present during that day if we want to strike that from.
Right. We could strike that, or we could wait and just change it as we get closer to it. If we have an alternate date now, we could change it now.
Well, we need to go probably to the fourth or fifth because that's going to be around budget time. And again, if there's a chance of a veto, we might, we have to look at that, correct? So we could tentatively schedule it for the fourth or the fifth because now we're.
Or the second is the Monday, correct?
Yeah, we wouldn't want to do it before because, you know, the city hall's got the voting machine. I'd rather not be in here with all the voting machines and everything here afterwards. But we need to schedule it for the fourth just in case we have to have a meeting if there's an override of a veto scenario.
These dates can be changed later. This is just to set the annual calendar. But if you wanted to change the date now, that's fine, but.
Whatever you're comfortable with, Mr. Sir.
I'd say leave as is, so we'll know more as the day comes, you know?
We know we're not going to be here that day.
You're not going to be there on election day.
Exactly, yeah.
My request is just to strike that date, then.
Leave the seventeenth, and then we can.
Correct. And then we can add, once we get to budget, any other dates that we'd like.
Sounds good.
Motion to approve with the amendment to strike Tuesday, November third.
Second. I'm fine. I just wanted to make the notice known about the budget. Thank you, Mr.
Motion made by Councilwoman Souza. Where was the second? Councilman Fogarty, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Five-zero. Thank you all. Thank you, Councilwoman. Next item.
Do you need a motion to accept the consent?
Yeah, the rest of the consent, yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the consent.
Second.
Motion made to accept the remainder of the consent. Item seconded by Council Vice President Rego. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have that. Thank you. Next.
Licenses for discussion and possible vote, non-public hearing.
Make a motion to bundle C one and C two.
Motion made to bundle items C one and C two.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Souza. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Councilman Fogarty, seconded by Councilwoman Souza. Or approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Aye. Madam Clerk, could you please read the names? And before the gentleman leave from Wingstop Restaurant, good luck. You made one mistake. Usually, people come in with samples, and they have a license, but I'm just kidding. But thank you. You will also be at Senior Center for those watching Thursday night for mayor's sponsor, you're sponsoring a community meeting, right? And that was at your request? Yes, thank you for doing that, and good luck in new business. Thank you. Could you read the names of the two businesses that we just approved, the licenses, please?
Wingstop and Esler Company.
So that's the new Wingstop Restaurant, which will be at seventy-five Newport Avenue in East Providence.
And Esler Company, ten Reservoir Avenue in Smithville.
That's the address, but the business is a home improvement business. Okay, thank you. Next item.
Communications, John Harris.
Yes.
You mean public comment?
Yes, public comment, sorry.
Just name and address for the record, please.
My name is John Harris, and I reside at twenty-five Park Drive, Riverside, Rhode Island.
Welcome.
Thank you. Well, I was going to talk about the opposition of the e-bike thing, but it sounds like you guys are tabling that.
Yeah, you can say what you want, but you might want to hold specifics until you see the new language. And we'll have that out in time for everyone to review it, and there'll be a public hearing on it. So, but you're welcome to, you took the time to come.
I'm interested in your opinion.
Okay, great. So, yeah, this is like, you know, to the current language of what the ordinance was drawn up. But, yeah, I am a local business owner, an avid cyclist, and a resident of East Providence. I'm speaking tonight in opposition. I'm concerned that in an effort to enforce or control a small group of individuals, we are creating unnecessary government and expenses for a larger group of responsible users. My wife and I both own electric bikes. They were a godsend when the Washington Bridge failed. My wife works at the Miriam Hospital, and I, myself, just off of Broadway, which is an area of heavy congestion. Having these e-bikes afforded us both the opportunity to remain punctual at our jobs. At this time, we had also just bought our house, and we were both sharing a vehicle. We were grateful that we didn't need to pay any extra money to register said bikes. There are many people like ourselves who safely and courteously use electric bikes to navigate the rising cost of living. Unfortunately, there are many brands popping up and selling vehicles labeled as electric bikes, when in reality, they are closer to electric motorcycles or mopeds at best. Often, these brands will include ways to jailbreak or unlock the vehicle to achieve higher speeds and eliminate the pedals entirely. These bikes are still classified and marketed as electric bikes to conform to government standards, but more importantly, fool unsuspecting parents. These vehicles and their juvenile users are who you are really concerned about. In an effort not to criticize without offering a solution, I believe this is a problem larger than local government. Local authorities should educate themselves more adequately before creating ordinances which will put law-abiding citizens at odds with police. Perhaps age restrictions would be a more efficient approach. Right now, the e-bike market is a bit like the Wild West, especially online, and states should probably take a look at what products are actually coming to market. Conversely, there are many local businesses here that sell safe and legal electric bicycles. These people are not the problem. Lastly, I have come to know some of these kids that this ordinance is intended, mostly the kids with pedal bikes. They frequent my store, and we have become friends. I do recognize the issues of destruction of property at Kent Heights and whatever other trouble they land themselves in. I've done my best to be a positive influence for them and point out bad behavior. I tell them to do better and remind them to ride safely. But they are kids, and I am not their parents. Personally, I think this whole response is over the top, and I'm thankful to live in a community where kids riding bikes is causing trouble in our community. So it's one of our biggest issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Steven Tate.
Mr. Tate present? Okay, is there someone else? Just a name and address for the record.
Renee Ignacio, fifteen Madeline Drive. So I'm just here because I wanted to give you the information straight. Okay, to be honest, since there was a lot more to this stop-arm camera and bus safety that I brought up to the school department and to you guys, the city council, this wasn't just about bringing the better bus system. It was especially about our special needs vans. And by having a company that provided both the system that actually maintained a hundred percent better. The reason I started that in November, and this is the reason I'm here, because I know the bus cameras are up there, but I needed to come up here for my own personal reasons. I started it in November because I got beat up and I got strangled by a child on a special needs van. There was other issues. There was no camera on my van. My camera was not working on my own van that had issues. So it was six months my camera wasn't working. So, yes, I reported it daily. And again, I did everything I was supposed to, and I was pushing to make it so that we had working cameras for not only our students but our drivers. But because I brought this forward to both you and the school committee, I guess I was told by my boss at Ocean State that I ruffled some feathers, more like pissed off someone, so much that I actually lost my job over this, okay? I lost my job that I've been doing for sixteen years, a job that I loved and put my whole heart into. That's okay, because things are so much better, so much better. I actually have people that have called me in other towns to help, because I have somebody that's a grant writer that actually want to know what a regular student is more important than a special needs student that doesn't have extra precautions on the buses. And everything that my boss told me, I had a choice to choose fighting the mayor and the client, which is the city, or keep my job at Ocean State, and I have it on tape. So none of it is a lie. So tonight, I'm bringing you all a copy from Gatekeeper, the stop-arm cameras that the city actually has. Because if you look at it, it is for the city. It does not say School Department. It says city on it. So as you look through the comment, the contract, you will see that it states that. Every school committee meeting that was ever directed, the answer was always given the council. It was supposed to be the council or whatever. At the July twenty-fourth meeting, when Ms. Rossi asked the committee president where she could get a specific information and who did the RFP, he stated the administration, the mayor's administration. When she asked again, the mayor did the RFP, the council president's exact answer was, well, I mean, I'm basically given the update that I was given. Yes, so the administration.
Excuse me one second. You mean school committee president, not council, right?
Yeah.
I was not involved. Okay.
I'm sorry.
No problem. Just wanted.
My bad.
In that July meeting, unfortunately.
Yeah, fact, I wasn't even at that meeting after family. No, not a problem. Just want to keep things accurate.
I'm still very upset about.
We get blamed for enough. He gets blamed for enough.
School committee, because I just have here a committee. His exact answer was, well, I mean, basically, given the update that I was given, yes. So the administration, with Diane Clark and the finance director, put it together. I have every transcript from every meeting printed out, all the backtalk, all the wish-washy, everything. So the last school committee, the cameras were installed, as I know, on every bus. But I want you to look at one point on that contract. So the point of all of this tonight is that it says that if we do not meet the five thousand paid in fractions, the city is required to pay Gatekeeper a fee of equivalent of the five thousand which is not collected. And you will see that on page seven, line F. It says the city will be responsible for whatever amount of money that is not collected in fines. And I thank you and your office for giving me the information. My other issue was page fifteen is missing. No, actually, it's, I think, eighteen or nineteen is.
I'll check. I believe it might have been misnumbered, but.
That's what I heard, but I'm not sure.
I'll double-check, but I think that's what, it was just misnumbered when, yeah. But that's a public document, so.
Yeah, no, I just, but I want to thank you for your office. So I gave the school committee a list of questions about the contract that I asked, and I asked to be put on the agenda to have the questions answered. I gave you guys a list of my questions. I actually asked Sharon Corresi that night how to get put on the agenda, and she told me that I had to send the school committee president an email, which I did. That night, I waited eighteen days later to get a response that said he would not put me on the agenda because it is controlled by their bylaws, and basically, three members did not want me to speak at the agenda, on the agenda. And I have all the emails for that, too. Everything is printed out. I just came here tonight because I know it's over. It is what it is. I'm very upset about what happened to me, but it's okay. But I want the council to know exactly what is in that contract, because you guys are going to be on the hook, I think. And I want the taxpayers to know what is, how that contract is written. And that's what I came here to say tonight. And I thank you for indulging me and putting up with me for everything.
Thank, thank you. Keep coming. Next person?
That was the answer.
Yeah, it's in. Okay, thank you. Next item.
Council members, number one, discussion on community choice electricity option. Council Vice President Rego.
Council Vice President.
I put this on the agenda request for last week. This was, we had a discussion on this issue a couple of weeks ago where with the rising electrical costs in this state, we as a council should take the lead, along with the administration, to adopt what other cities and towns are doing. I think everybody was present at the council meeting where I passed out the Narragansett Plan, which seems to be one of the more successful ones in the state of Rhode Island. I can bring that up. So ironically, when I gave this to the clerk to put on last week, it was the next day National Grid was announcing about their not giving rebates and everything else and looking for more increases. So moving forward in January of twenty twenty-six, we really need to get down and serious on this issue. It affects the citizens of the city, and we need to take the lead because, excuse me, not National Grid, Rhode Island Energy, I should say. This is an issue where looking out for the fellow townies, we need to, excuse me, we need to do something to get on board with this. Again, I would almost adopt, you know, what Narragansett was doing, the company that they, their consultant that they use, that there's a couple of consultants. And back in my campaign, when I was campaigning in twenty twenty-two, I talked about this and wanted to move it, keep on moving it forward. Another one to go look at is, it's been almost twenty-five years, twenty to twenty-five years, is Brookline, Massachusetts. It's probably like the benchmark that we could use in New England. So between Narragansett and Brookline, I know Barrington has it. We really got to take the forefront on this for twenty twenty-six, because Rhode Island Energy is not a friend of the consumer and the citizens of the city. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. I do know this, since that first statement from Rhode Island Energy, the PUC has approved a watered-down version of a discount or rebate, but very little. So hopefully, you can get your, correct, and getting them on track.
And again, Frank, what is it we as the council can do to help with this?
We have to, there's a couple of steps that we have to go through. I mean, we, we need to get the administration involved in this as well. We have to petition the PUC, set it up. The best way to do it is have one of these outside company, like I know there's one in New York. I forget who Brookline uses and uh. Dan, do you have information on this already? I knew we had talked about this before.
We've been contacted by several different private entities that offer this service. The city is already working. We have been working over the past few months to try to develop an RFQ that we're going to put out on the city's website to essentially, you know, basically look at the different companies that are out there that offer this service. Um, because we can't just work with the one or two companies that have reached out to us saying that they provide this. So we are working on that RFQ. We have been over the last few months. And yeah, so hopeful to get it out.
With the right partner, it's something that can happen.
Correct. Essentially, we have to put out the RFQ, select the vendor, and then at that point, we can negotiate um costs with them related to what the city benefit will be versus what, you know, the benefit for this company will be. They're going to solicit, essentially get rates, ideally reduced rates for residents. It's not always reduced, but then we'll offer the opportunity for this program to be pushed out to the entire community. So we are, we are working on this.
You, have you reached out to, say, to Tom and Jim Tannen, the town manager in Narragansett?
I would have to go through my emails. I have reached out to a few municipalities who have done this and they provided their bid documents to us for their RFQ. Um, and we're just working through trying to revise that and make it East Providence specific.
Is this just for electric and not gas?
This, this would be typically for electric.
For electric, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Council Vice President. Next item.
Public hearings ordinance for second and final passes for discussion and possible vote. Number one, in ordinance and amendment of chapter 18 of the revised ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended in title vehicles and traffic subsection B of 18-269 entitled stopped, stop in yield intersections designated when stops required is amended by adding thereto the following. Ferris Avenue northbound traffic at David Street, introduced by Council Vice President Rego.
This is second passage. I, I move on this.
Motion to approve by Council Vice President Rego, seconded by Councilwoman Souza. All in favor? Sorry about that. Is there anyone present that wants to speak on this? This is the second passage. We have had discussion prior. I'll ask once again if anyone's present to speak on this matter. Seeing none, close the public hearing. Any other discussion from the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded by Councilwoman. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
Number two, in ordinance and amendment of chapter 18 of the revised ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended in title vehicles and traffic, section 18-307 entitled parking prohibited at all times of article 10 entitled stopping, standing, and parking is amended by adding thereto the following. Fisher Street, East Side from Seth Street South for 200 feet, introduced by Councilwoman Souza.
Council, I'd like to table this matter until further notice.
Motion by Councilwoman Souza to table, seconded by Councilman Lawson. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Five zero. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Next item.
New business, Mayor Communications Director of Policy and Constituent Services, Andre Herrera.
Yes, sir. Welcome.
Good evening, Council President, members of the city council. I want to start by saying thank you so much for your support for the Crescent Park Improvement Project. Uh, that's going to be on time, on budget, and we're really excited. So I also want to say that we have a proclamation to present affirming Human Rights Day, which is December 10th, 2025. And I can read that into the record if you want.
If you have a brief summary of it.
Yeah, Andre, usually what we do, unless it's something like really touching to everybody, we just kind of accept it. Well, you're more than welcome to.
Well, this is um introduced by the United Nations to declare that human rights are an ineligible right for all humans in the world, so.
Think in this day and age, I think it's good that it should be read.
All right. Human Rights Day Proclamation 2025. Whereas on December 10th, 1948, the United Nations General Assembly adopted the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, a milestone document that proclaims the inalienable rights to which every person is entitled, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, language, political or other opinion, national or social origin, property, birth, or other status. And whereas Human Rights Day is observed annually on December 10th to honor this declaration and to promote awareness of the fundamental principles of equality, justice, and dignity for all individuals. And whereas the City of East Providence is committed to fostering a community where every resident can live with respect, fairness, and equal opportunity, upholding the values of tolerance, inclusion, and mutual understanding. And whereas recognizing Human Rights Day encourages ongoing efforts to protect and advance human rights within our city, our state, and our nation, ensuring that all people are treated with the dignity they deserve. Now, therefore, I, Roberto L. de Silva, Mayor of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, do hereby proclaim December 10th, 2025 as Human Rights Day. All right. Thank you, everyone, and also want to move on to the next order of business. A proclamation in support of establishing the Soham's National Heritage Area. This is a designation and where we would be joining nine other municipalities that comprise the northeastern shore of the Narragansett Bay, proclaiming the Soham's ancestral homeland of the Massasoit. Also, when Keen, who welcomed the pilgrims in 1621 and forged a 50-year alliance that changed the course of history.
Do, do we want to vote on the resolution?
Well, I was going to ask, could you explain, we, we have the resolution also on, on this. What, what does this mean? I've had a question about geography. Does, what, what is it actually entailing for East Providence? Is there a physical sign or is something in the work?
You know, we're establishing a, in conjunction with other municipalities, this heritage area that would.
Like a corridor in the area.
It, it spans these nine municipalities and we just want to acknowledge that this is the Soham's National Heritage. So in coming up, in conjunction with the celebration of the 250th anniversary of the United States, uh, we want to make sure that we're preserving this land and acknowledging our ancestors that came before us.
I would want to touch on what the council president just talked about. I think a great idea would be to add a sign to Hunts Mills, talking about this area being a national heritage area. That would be, I think, you know, on paper is one thing, but we need to take that next step. And a sign is ideal and Hunts Mills would be the ideal situation, tying in with the whole King Philip War and everything that went on during that time.
Yeah, good, good idea. The, the resolution itself, to interject, is on page five under letter D, number one. Do, do we want to do that now while the director is here?
I'll make a motion to approve.
There is a, there was one change that we had to make to that resolution based upon a communication that the planning department got from one of the chiefs. So it's, I passed it out. It's on your table. Everyone should have it. Was that loose? Was that loose on?
Yeah.
It literally, yep, yep. It just adds, it's different from what's in the packet, though. It just adds one name. It adds the, sorry, just. It adds the uh Poconocat before the Massasoit. So that's what, this is one change, but they thought it was significant enough to put it in there. So it's the first whereas clause, I believe.
So legally do.
Just, just, so you're just going to pass that one. You're going to withdraw the one that's on the agenda and just pass that as a substitute.
So I'll make a motion to withdraw the one on the agenda.
Correct.
And do we got to vote on that first or can it all be?
You can make it all one. Okay.
Make a motion to withdraw the one on the agenda and a motion to approve this one updated.
Yeah, updated one, seconded by Councilwoman Souza, Councilman Fogarty. Do you have a question, Councilwoman?
Just to the Vice President's comment, I just had a question for Mike. Can we say that since we're making changes to this resolution and adopting a revised version? Can we add that we would, the council would suggest a designation be done at Hunts Mill? Because on this, on this resolution, it doesn't have any location. It just says a designation.
So I, I think here, here's, I think this is really just in support of a, of a.
Overall.
Of an overall, but this is to, for asking the, basically the federal government and the Department of Interior to make this a designated area, so.
So that might be a resol, a different, a separate decision that we could take up.
Good idea.
I'm sorry to interrupt. And I think that the purpose of this is to kind of show the city's support and the other communities around the East Bay that are supporting this designation at the national level.
This would be a federal thing.
Correct.
The feds would have to. We're just saying we support.
Like the National Heritage Carter in Winsoka, like the Blackstone Valley, that kind of issue.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we do have motion in second for the amended updated resolution. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you for your patience, Director. You can continue.
Thank you, Council President. And I also want to extend the invitation to city council and the rest of the city to come Saturday here at City Hall for our annual tree lighting, starting at four o'clock from four to seven. There'll be vendors. Santa will be there, and it's going to be a really nice time.
The date is this Saturday.
Saturday, December 6th.
Sixth, okay. And can I piggyback on that? December 7th, the next day is the Riverside Square Tree Lighting. And do we know when Rumfords is yet?
December 14th at Hunts Mills, the sleigh ride.
Oh, not at Freedom Green?
No.
Okay. So it's going to be a fun, fun month.
Tree lighting's in Rhode Island, right here in East Providence. That's a good thing.
I think there's five in total.
Yeah, at least.
The Carousel is not having it this year. So, right. Thank you.
Thank you, councilors. Thank you. Also want to acknowledge the presence of the school committee vice chair, Anthony DeCemus, here in the audience tonight. Thank you for cooperation and working together. Next item, please.
Number two, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Automatic Temperature Controls, Inc., for the continued.
Make a motion to approve.
Oh, hold on.
We, we could go back to the school liaison.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution that was just read.
Motion made, Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilwoman Souza. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
We can bang out all these resolutions and then finish on the school.
Sure. Let's continue with the resolutions.
Number three, resolution authorizing the mayor to purchase two replacement vehicles for the fire department, introduced by Council President Rodrick.
Motion to approve.
This is using the capital funds already allocated. Motion to approve by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Fogarty, Council Vice President Rego. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next.
See, report of school committee liaison, Councilman Lawson, Martin Middle School opening ceremony.
Was there more?
Don't forget this, number four in resolution.
Was there the John Lewis?
If he's just.
Four and five.
Give me one second.
That's okay. I just want to make sure nothing's missed. I know we jumped tonight.
Jumped. We've been hurt, oh.
Number four, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with J.R. and Sons Construction, Inc., for the, for the John Lewis Park Parking Lot and Walkway Improvement Project, introduced by Council President Rodrick.
I'll make a motion to approve, and just so people know, this is the Bold Point Park area in between the Yacht Club and the.
Medina.
Al's on the waterfront.
Yeah. So I just wanted to say through the chair.
Yes.
That I am really excited that this is on the agenda. It has been a long time coming. I've advocated for this park to be resurfaced and to be utilized. It's a beautiful location and it just wasn't easily accessible and enjoyed like it should be. I know in hindsight, we were trying to get Bold Point finished first and then work our way out of the coastline. So I am really excited that this is finally on the agenda for construction to take place in the city.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilwoman, for your persistent support of, of this. Um, and you actually did get the motion in first, so motion made by Councilwoman Souza, seconded by Councilman Lawson. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next item.
Where are we? Adjournment.
No, number five. No, we already did five. That's right, so.
Report of school committee liaison, Councilman Lawson, Martin Middle.
So last Tuesday, um, they cut the ribbon on the north wing of the Martin Middle School project. The north wing houses the middle school itself, grades six, seven, and eight. It was an amazing, amazing time. It was, the commitment this community has shown, we've invested over $300 million between building a new high school, renovating Martin, and improvements at Waddington. We've developed a school building fund. There is a lot of great things happening. I know there's the naysayers out there. I'm more than willing to sit down face to face and discuss their problems and see if we can help them. But overall, things are going really, really good with the schools. The ceremony was great. The building is gorgeous. It's modernized. We have robotic labs. We have every modern thing that a student needs to succeed, and the investment is amazing. The first phase is complete. They moved in December 1st. Bob, you probably know better how it went. Oh, you haven't heard? Okay. The second phase is they're going to build the south wing, which will house our pre-K. As people know, Waddington's very crowded right now. Once that is finished, and I believe fall of 27 is the anticipated opening, the Oldham School, the former Metalcrest, will be moving into that building, and that will free up more classroom spaces in Riverside. So I know things are tight. They have been for the last few years, but we are moving. There is a plan. So I want to thank Dr. Ferran, Sandy, all the members of the building committee. There's a lot of work to that, a lot of work. They meet weekly and there's a lot. You, you got to go over every little item. You have to approve things, budget, everything. So congrats to the building committee, the school department. Be proud. It's a beautiful building. It's an amazing achievement between the high school, the new Martin Middle School, and the improvements at Waddington. There's a lot of good. There's always stuff, little things that we still need to address, but we are addressing them. Nothing's being ignored. Nobody's intentionally ignoring things.
And part of that bond issue, which the, the public, close to 80% supported, included funding to upgrade parts of Riverside Middle School. They have entirely new windows, which is an important thing in a big public building, especially for energy and security. They have new science labs. They have new media center. And Riverside was always a well-built building. So right now we have three great secondary educational institutions in our city. And the neighborhood schools are all moving along. I won't get into it tonight, but although I am mostly positive, there, there at times is a chance, is, is the need to answer some negativity, and I won't get into it tonight. There was some, a couple of erroneous pictures put on social media with some comments. One of them that had my name mentioned, so that's why I feel like I have to comment, that were totally erroneous. The, a, a very hardworking school department maintenance person was, was blamed for some shoddy maintenance, and it was not true. We'll get into it in another time, who and why and where this picture developed. But what you said is true. The opening ceremony was wonderful December 1st. It was a smooth opening. Students, staff, faculty were, were all there. Many of us have. Uh, students, staff, faculty, uh, were, were all there. Um, many of us have, have all visited. Uh, I'm there often. And like the high school, so far, they're still under budget. So we're hoping that we can maybe add to that school fund that we've all established. Um, there's still some work to be done. They've got to demo the old building.
Absolutely.
And it's amazing that they got this done while students have still been going to school, built this place. And now they're gonna knock down the old uh, place while students are still in school. And you know, a little inconvenience here and there, but um, well, well worth.
That's what I'm saying, buddy. We got robots roaming on Mars. There's a lot we can get done.
So anyway, we'll.
I also want to, before we leave the schools, um, the fall sports teams, they had a lot of success. Lot of success. Um, we have two state champions, our cheerleaders, and our unified volleyball. And at some future meeting, we'll definitely honor them. The other teams are highly competitive. Um, football is a lot of fun. Shout out to my nephew Jacob Dua, the quarterback. Um.
Great.
It was a great, great fall season for our sports teams. And you know, we invested a lot in those athletic facilities at the school. And you know, let's hope the spring is just as successful. And our baseball coach brings another championship.
Be nice. Every fall team made the playoffs. Soccer, volleyball, football, we're this much away from playing for championships.
Soccer knocked off the king. I mean.
Yeah, the soccer team knocked off the, the two big private schools. So did uh, volleyball knocked off the number one team. And then, you know, they lost in the, at the last minute. But it's not always about winning and losing. It's, it's about uh, the successful student athletes. And it, it's been a great season. Why do we talk about schools at city council meetings?
Because we're proud of.
Because we're vested in them. We, we help pay for it. We help support it. The, the community is with us. So it may sound like we're on the school committee sometime.
And, and let's be honest, in the past, there was a city side, school side.
Yeah.
Part in the feds. And our goal was to smash that wall down.
We had a regime that at one point eliminated middle school sports. This, we lost good people that went to other systems and just left, left here. But we've talked enough about it. Uh, the vice chair of the school committee, did you want to add anything about the opening at Martin or?
I'm up.
I know you're always shy. Okay. Very, very good. Thank you, Councilman, for that uh, report. Um, next item?
It's a motion.
Before we adjourn though, I did want to, and I may defer to Councilman Fogarty because uh, he was, he worked closely with this gentleman. But speaking about school committee members, a prior school committee member um, passed away at a young age recently. I think he was about fifty-five, uh, very, very young. And um, did a lot in the community and Councilman, I would defer to you.
Yeah, just to recognize, I mean, you know, once again, apologize for last meeting. You know, when we all have that loss, it, it affects you. So affects the community, affects your families, affects the extension of everything, just like we do here. I'm not up here to make decisions for your lives without reasoning, without constituents giving me their opinions. And reasoning with the fellow council, with people everywhere, would make sense, common sense. I don't get into the negative stuff. If I don't say anything good about you, I'm usually not talking about you. Okay? Unless I go to your face. So back to Bob Farrier. I just left Sacred Heart practice to run over here. This is what people do. Just like you people here. We all keep going. We don't stop. So he passed away. He had a stroke. One hour after his game he coached. He got home with his wife, Paula, and he had a stroke. Uh, half his body paralyzed. ICU, around hospital. You know, the, the rest of the story is he had a second stroke in the hospital while he was recovering. They were asking for pitches because he was losing his memory, bringing it back to his hope. But then the hope failed because he had a second stroke. So prayers for all the families. He coached thousands of kids in Riverside, St. Martha's, St. Brendan's. You know, family, big family. Let's face it, we're all gonna go. All this heated debates and this ignorance and this politics and this talking of just what I just said, without swearing, is inappropriate, unacceptable. I've said it everywhere I've been. Yeah, I did the bathrooms. Yeah, I did that. Yeah, I did the lighting. I did, who cares? Did you do the right thing? Most of us should do good and disappear. That's what really should be done. Constantly arguing, constantly fighting. Okay? I want to debate on that e-bike because I care. I use the sidewalk. I got eight grandkids. We drive to Kentfield. There's a junior in high school changing a diaper then going to high school. How's he getting to school? All right. So apologies for the long speech, but the family of Bob Farrier, I'm so sorry for your loss. I'm sure the council feels the same. Very good friend, forty years deep or longer, will be missed. And that's good people that do good for the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen. So we can adjourn in his memories or a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by all and seconded by all. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.